All right, looks like we're on air. Um, welcome. I'd like to, uh, welcome everybody to our October 22nd, 2020 regular meeting of the City of Xenia City Council. At this time, uh, we are going to have an invocation by Mayor Mays, followed by the pledge of allegiance by Councilman Cody Branham. Would you all please rise?
Our gracious Lord, thank you for another day. Thank you for allowing us to be here, whether online or in person, to come together and make decisions on behalf of the citizens of Xenia. God, I pray for wisdom tonight, for clarity and discernment. I pray that we would be wise with our words. I pray that we would be compassionate and kind and respectful. And we are so thankful for the city staff, the work that they have put into, um, these meetings and our agenda, the things that they bring before us. Thank you for their efforts. We pray for our police and fire this evening, um, for all the men and women who are serving our city, our public safety servants, and, uh, I just pray, God, that you would protect them this evening, that it would be, um, a night where they can be at peace. We give all this to you in your holy name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I guess it's a delay.
A little delay there. Okay. All right. So, thank you, Mayor Mays, for the invocation. Thank you, Councilman Branham, for that pledge of allegiance. Um, we'll ask for a roll call, please.
Vice President Wallace. Vice President Wallace.
He seems to have frozen.
Councilman Scrivens.
Uh, I want to freeze, but I can't. Uh, here.
Councilwoman Dean.
Here.
Councilman Branham.
Here.
Councilman Dean.
Here.
Mayor Mays.
Here.
President Smith.
Aye, here. All right. Please show for the record, uh, Vice President Wallace is with us, um, via Zoom. Um, next is our approval of minutes from the October 8th, 2020 regular session. Do I have anyone like to entertain a motion to accept the minutes as written? Okay, I have a move by, uh, Councilwoman Dean, seconded by Mayor Mays. Any discussion or corrections regarding the minutes at this time? Yes, Councilman Scrivens?
Uh, Mr. President, on page four at the top, it's, it, it shows that I was the one who, uh, introduced, uh, Resolution 2020-E, but in fact, it was Councilman Branham.
All right, thank you very much. We'll have City Clerk make that change. Any other corrections or additions to the minutes? Thank you for that notation. See no other corrections? Can I get a roll call to accept, please?
Vice President Wallace. Councilman Scrivens.
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean.
Aye.
Councilman Branham.
Aye.
Councilman Dean.
Aye.
Mayor Mays.
Aye.
President Smith.
Abstain.
Motion carried.
Thank you very much. We have no special presentations for tonight. So, next is audience comments. If there's anyone in the audience tonight, um, you're welcome to come to the podium at this time. Give us your name and address for the record. Limit your comments three to four minutes. Very small audience tonight. We're gonna move on. Um, and City Clerk, do we have any emails that, uh, no, no emails to share? Um, we have no old, no old business tonight, and, um, we have a public hearing. Our public hearing is Resolution 2020-dash-double-E. This is the second reading. This is adopting a five-year capital improvement plan for the City of Xenia, and this was introduced by Councilman Branham on October 8th.
Like to move to introduce for passage?
Thank you. Move for passage by Councilman Branham. Do we have a second?
No second.
Second, okay. So, as a rule of Robert's rule, um, are we opening up this public hearing then? Now that we have a motion and a second?
Yep.
Okay. So, at this time, I'm gonna open the public hearing regarding the, uh, five-year capital improvement plan and ask anyone if they would like to come forward to speak on behalf in support of this capital improvement plan. Okay, see no one come forward. If anyone would like to come to the podium and speak against the five-year capital improvement plan, limit your comments four to five minutes. We have no one coming forward. If anyone would like to come neither for or against the capital improvement plan, state any comments. Now is your time. And at this time, I will ask any of my colleagues if they have anything they would like to discuss regarding the capital improvement plan.
Councilman President, I would just like to say thank you to, uh, Ryan, Jared, and Brent for putting that together, and I know there was plenty of other staff that was involved in that, and I appreciate their, uh, response to my 29 questions, I believe it was, on, on Monday morning. So, thank you guys for that.
All right, thank you, Councilman Branham. See no other comments. I'm gonna close the public hearing. We have a first and a second, and ask for a roll call, please.
Vice President Wallace. Councilman Scrivens.
Aye.
Councilman Dean, or Councilwoman Dean.
Aye.
Councilman Branham.
Aye.
Councilman Dean.
Aye.
Mayor Mays.
Aye.
President Smith.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you very much.
Mr. President, as a point of order, and I would, uh, probably ask our, uh, Law Director, um, it appears that, um, Vice President Wallace is connected, but we've lost both audio and video, but it's, it's showing that he's still connected. So,
Okay.
Um, I'm assuming, Madam Law Director, we can record his vote after the fact? Would that be acceptable?
Yes, I think he's, I can see him. If you guys can't, um, Dr. Wallace, are you with us?
Oh, now we can hear you.
Yes.
Okay.
But I, I, I didn't hear the roll call, but now it is yes.
Okay. Thank you, uh, Vice President Wallace. The, the last vote was re, uh, regarding the public hearing on adopting the capital improvement plan. How would you vote on that?
I think you said yes.
Yes, okay, thank you.
Yes.
All right, thank you very much. Next item, new business Resolution 2020-dash-double-F. All right, this is, this is stated as an emergency. This is authorizing acceptance of the Federal Victims of Crime Act and the State Victims Assistance Grants for 2021 and declaring an emergency, and we're gonna turn this right over to Madam Law Director. Thank you.
This is the same legislation that councils use every year. Uh, as you are aware, our Victim Advocate Program, uh, we apply for both federal and state grants to supplement our budget, uh, to help support the functions of the Victim Advocate Division. With the passage in 2017 of Marcy's Law, many of the services that Victim Advocate Division provides that, that were, weren't required are now constitutionally required. Um, these are things that we have to do and services that we are mandated under the state constitution to provide. So, this funding just helps supplement our budget and the support of those services. The amount of grant funding we've received, um, has been less over the last couple of years. Part of that is due to reduced costs in the Victim Advocate Division. Our costs have gone down, so the amount of grant we've received has gone down. This year, however, um, there's been a big reduction in the federal, uh, funding. Every victim advocate department across the country that applied for funding, um, saw reduction. It was down about 34% uh, across the board for all jurisdictions. So, I have been talking to, uh, Jared and Ryan, um, as well as the Victim Advocate Supervisor, uh, looking for ways to help make some of that lost funding back up. Um, even, uh, hopefully we can find more grants even if we can't because these services are mandated, uh, under the state constitution. We do have to provide them. So, this will authorize the acceptance. We are requesting that you do it as an emergency tonight because the sooner we can get that paperwork and the sooner we can start receiving the funding. Um, the funding is usually available by the 1st of November, so if we can get this passed tonight, we can start, uh, receiving our funding next month.
Thank you, Madam Law Director. Do we have, uh, any of my colleagues care to make a motion to pass this as an emergency tonight?
So, move as an emergency.
So, move by the mayor as an emergency.
President, I think, move.
And, um, do we have a second?
As an emergency.
As an emergency. Is that you, Vice President Wallace? Move as a second. Do we have any questions regarding this tonight? Yes, Councilman Scrivens?
Uh, just noting that, um, on the receiving end, we'd receive $119,050, but on the, on the expenditure end, we'd have $28,726. I think that's a pretty good deal.
Thank you very good. Very much. Anyone else have anything to comment? All right. Thank you, Madam Law Director. Can I get a roll call, please?
Vice President Wallace. Councilman Scrivens.
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean.
Aye.
Councilman Branham.
Aye.
Councilman Dean.
Aye.
Mayor Mays.
Aye.
President Smith.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you very much. Next item.
Mr. Finance Director, Dr. Wallace is back with us. If you will record his vote at this point.
Vice President Wallace, uh, are you voting in favor of the, uh, Emergency Ordinance 2020-dash-F-F?
Well, he was there for a minute and asked for his vote.
All right, thank you. We'll record his vote. All right, our next item, Item B, an administrative motion. This is appointing Councilmember, met, excuse me, Councilmember Rebecca Dean to the Xenia Community Improvement Corporation Board of Directors. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, sir. Uh, City Council adopted Resolution 2020-double-A, authorizing the formation of the Xenia Community Improvement Corporation. Um, since that authorization, the articles in corporation have been filed with the Ohio Secretary of State and were approved on October 5th. Resolution 2020-double-A has established, uh, measures for the creation of the Board of Directors for the CIC, uh, which would include a council member appointed by a majority vote of the City Council. Uh, once this council member is apport, uh, appointed to the, uh, CIC Board and thereby a quorum created, um, the Board will be able to meet to appoint the three additional at-large members. Uh, Councilwoman Rebecca Dean has, uh, tossed her head in the ring, uh, with interest for this opportunity, um, uh, to serve on the Board on behalf of Council, and we then, uh, would recommend that she be appointed, um, through an administrative motion this evening, and so we recommend that appointment for a four-year term.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager, and I would like to thank, um, Councilwoman Dean, um, first person to email me. Thank you so much. Do we have a motion to appoint Councilwoman Dean?
So moved.
Moved by the mayor and then seconded by Councilman Scrivens. Any discussion regarding this appointment? Anything from you? No, thank you. All right, see none. Can I get a roll call, please?
Vice President Wallace. Councilman Scrivens.
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean.
Abstain.
Councilman Branham.
Aye.
Councilman Dean.
Aye.
Mayor Mays.
Aye.
President Smith.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you very much. And again, thank you, uh, Councilwoman Dean, for your volunteer on that committee. Our next item, administrative motion C, is awarding the bid and authorizing the City Manager to execute a contract with Institute Form Technologies LLC for the 2020 Sewer Pipelines Rehabilitation Project. Mr. Mayorman.
Thank you, sir. Uh, city staff is again, um, this should recommend a continuation of our efforts to address what we call inflow and infiltration in our sanitary sewer system, uh, through the use of slip lining technology, which was where we coat the interior of a sewer line with a, a plastic-like substance, and it's a really cost-effective way of extending the life of sewer lines. Uh, as we are successful, um, in reducing inflow and infiltration, this is a benefit to our consumers and our public because it helps to reduce the cost of treating essentially rainwater that, uh, that infiltrates our, uh, sanitary sewer system. So, this is a benefit to our community. Uh, for this year's program, staff of the Engineering Division is proposing, uh, to line sewers located in the northeastern portion of the city, immediately north of the James T. Henry Circle. Uh, in addition, East Marcus Street would be lined from North Detroit Street to North Columbus Street. Uh, the city received five qualified bids, as presented in the agenda packet, and, uh, these were opened on, um, October 6th for this year's sewer slip lining project. Uh, among those bids received, In situ Form Technologies LLC was the lowest bid submitted. Uh, the firm has previously performed, uh, this contract service for the city, and, uh, their performance has been, uh, quite acceptable. Um, and so for these reasons, staff supports awarding the contract to In situ Form at a cost not to exceed $170,912.50. Request the Council award the bid by administrative motion this evening to allow the project to move forward.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Do we have a motion to award the bid?
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Branham. Thank you. Do we have a second? Seconded by Vice Pres, I'm sorry, by, uh, Councilwoman Dean. Any discussion regarding this motion? All right. I don't see any other comments, so roll call, please.
Vice President Wallace. Councilman Scrivens.
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean.
Aye.
Councilman Branham.
Aye.
Councilman Dean.
Aye.
Mayor Mays.
Aye.
President Smith.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you very much. Next on our agenda is administrative motion. This is regarding changing November 26, 2020, and December 24th, 2020's council regular meeting dates due to the holidays. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, sir. Uh, annually, the City Council's regular meeting in November, that second meeting, uh, falls on Thanksgiving, so this is a housekeeping measure that we take annually, uh, to, to, uh, reschedule that meeting. This year, uh, we're suggesting a change in date for that meeting from November 26th, uh, to the preceding Tuesday, which would be November 24th, which is, again, pretty typical to what the Council has preferred in the past. Uh, summarily, the second date in December, uh, for your council's second meeting in December falls on Christmas Eve. While I'm sure everyone would love to be here and not with family, um, we think that in an effort to, uh, to provide for more time for the year-end closeout and at the convenience of council and staff, uh, we are recommending that, uh, that meeting also be moved, and we're suggesting that that be kicked back to Tuesday, December 29th at 5:30 PM instead of the regular 6:30. Uh, these changes, uh, can be accomplished this evening through an administrative motion, and, uh, we're recommending your consideration and approval.
Thank you very much. Before we vote, the Tuesday 24th of November meeting, is that gonna remain at 6:00?
Yeah, I think that was the time, yeah.
Is that good for everyone? Say what? It's your birthday? We'll bring you some cake. All right.
I feel like I need to abstain from this. This is not a great move.
All right, very good. Um, I'll go ahead and accept a motion to, um, change these meeting dates. So moved, Mr. President. Thank you, moved by Councilman Dean. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Dean. Any other discussion regarding this? And I know this has definitely helped staff a little bit out there too as well. That Tuesday 29th meeting, um, that gives you enough time to ear in what you need to do?
Get rid of the Christmas tree.
Very good. Okay. All right, and, um, I just ask if anybody has conflicts with that, just send me an email so we can prepare in case there's anything tentative that, uh, is gonna require a majority vote of an emergency item. Um, see no other discussion? Uh, roll call, please.
Vice President Wallace. Councilman Scrivens.
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean.
Aye.
Councilman Branham.
Aye.
Councilman Dean.
Aye.
Mayor Mays.
Aye.
President Smith.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you very much. Next is administrative motion. This is approving the 2020 Heritage Tree nomination, and I will do this. Um, in 2011, Board for Recreation Arts and Cultural Activities Tree Committee developed the Heritage Tree Program. This was approved by City Council in 2011 to recognize, honor, and foster appreciation of trees on public and private property for their unique history, shape, and size, their beauty, and species that have been cultural, historical, and aesthetic in value. Since that time, 36 nominations for heritage trees have been approved. Plaques denoting pertinent information have been installed near each tree or grove of trees. So, for 2020, the Xenia Tree Committee has nominated on October 12th, and BRCA endorsed one nomination for the 2020 Heritage Tree as follows. An American Beech located at 1484 North Detroit Street with a height of 42 feet, I'm sorry, um, with a height of 65 feet and a, uh, I'm gonna say diameter width of 42 inches? Is that correct? Okay. Uh, canopy spread of 60 feet and the approximate age of 250 years. And there's a small picture there for your enjoyment. So, at this time, I am making the motion myself, and I'll ask for a second.
I'll second that because it's a beautiful tree, and I knew the former residents of that, that, uh, that, uh, that house there.
Thank you very much. We have a first and a second. Any comments regarding this wonderful tree?
Yeah, that was my, uh, grandpa's house.
Was it really?
And the house beside was his house, too.
Mr. Harmon Mullins and his wife, Audrey.
Yep.
I, I, I have a question, and this may or may not be the right time, but it has to do with this tree. There, could I go off topic just a hair, but with the tree?
Sure.
There has been several rumors that have been brought to my attention, um, that a road is going in right next to this house, and I know this tree would be a major issue as far as seeing, I don't know if the tree is gonna stick around, and also where this road came from because I'm
Where's it going?
fairly certain we did not approve a road going there. So, I just, I, I know that's awkward because that's your tree, but I'm still gonna ask because
Yeah.
that tree was, I, one, we don't know about a road, but this is now two different citizens have brought to my attention, and second, this tree would be a major line of sight issue.
Yeah. So, obviously, um, uh, this particular tree is at a residence home by my, my wife and I, and, um, we're obviously very proud of this tree. Um, uh, we, we see it as, um, not our tree, but, uh, we are the caretakers of that tree, um, as well as the property. Uh, these are, these are historic in our community, and we value that. Uh, we have been made aware, our staff has contacted this week, uh, by, uh, another, uh, other resident, uh, next door to the adjacent property, uh, inquiring why the city was acquiring the property and, you know, putting a roadway in. Uh, of course, our staff members in the planning department knew nothing about this. So, we've heard of this. Um, I do know there was some conversation previously, uh, from the county and perhaps the, the fairgrounds about putting a, a secondary means of ingress egress back to the fairground complex. Um, there's been no conversation with, uh, any city staff and engineering, planning, or City Manager's Office about this. Obviously, we would have some concerns, and, and clearly I have a, a conflict of interest because I own the adjoining property. So, uh, we will look into this, and this is something I'll tap the Assistant City Manager to, to kinda coordinate that conversation on our part, given my conflict of interest. But outside of any personal interest I have, we do have concern, I think, um, when the, the concept was raised previously because there are major line of sight issues for any type of significant ingress egress from that location. It's sort of offset from nicks across the street and the entrance to their parking lot. You're on one of the busiest roads in the city, um, and you do have, unfortunately, as we've talked about in the past, you, you, it's 35 mile per hour zone, you regularly have people going faster than that down that road. So, I think the intent was to have a secondary means of ingress egress for things like hand vengeance. So, you could have a lot of cars coming through that.
But this is not the city.
This is not the city. We've had no, in fact, we've not been contacted at all about it. Um, and I just learned about it actually from my neighbor the other day. Um, and I was a little concerned about what he told me as to how he was contacted. So, definitely something that needs to be looked into.
Thank you.
And this tree would without question be a line of sight problem.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so getting back to the, no, that's fine, because we're gonna, we're gonna address this topic a little bit more. Um, regarding the tree, uh, we have a motion and a second. Let's get that voted first, and then let's address the road issue after that. The motion was by Council, Councilman Dean, no, wait a minute.
You.
Uh, no, Scrivens. I made the motion and you seconded it. Sorry, looking at a wrong set of notes there. Any other discussion regarding the tree? No, roll call on the tree.
Vice President Wallace. Councilman Scrivens.
I'm voting yes for the tree.
Councilwoman Dean.
Yes.
Councilman Branham.
Aye.
Councilman Dean.
Aye.
Mayor Mays.
Aye.
President Smith.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Tree 2020. Okay, so now that we got the tree voted for and we're on this topic, so what is the proper procedure if the, if whoever this entity is, can you, can you elaborate on that? Do you feel comfortable doing that?
Yeah, again, with, you know, at a point where there would have to be further discussions, I think I would have to hand that over to Assistant City Manager. But as it relates to the, the typical procedure for something like this, um, if an entity, public or private, wanted to dedicate a roadway, so if this was an actual roadway dedication, there are specifications for our roadway that have to be met, proper permitting would have to be done, et cetera, et cetera. None of that's been communicated. If this was intended to merely be a driveway, the state, city still has a vested interest because if the, if the, uh, if the driveway is going to be larger than the existing drive, and there's an additional curb cut, there's impact to public infrastructure, uh, and the city does reserve the right from a, uh, traffic engineering standpoint to take these types of, of issues into consideration for the, obviously for the vehicular safety of the public. Um, so I think if these are, if these rumors are true, there needs to be a conversation immediately before there's any financial transactions agreed to and so forth because, um, again, looking at this objectively, I think the, the city would have some concerns about a point of ingress egress at this location for the fairgrounds with the intent that it's, you know, was going to be used for large events because of the dynamics of the roadway around it. So, we would, you know, I think we will probably, I, to be honest, I'm not even exactly her, sure whether it's the fairgrounds or the county. I'm assuming it would be the county, uh, under the County Commission because they do own the property immediately to the west of, of this subject parcel, which is adjacent to the fairground side.
So, would it go?
From North Detroit all the way over to Fairground Road. There's a big space.
What about Purcell?
Well, I can't imagine it would go to Purcell just for the mere fact that, you know, that's, that's a smaller residential street, obviously not designed for significant. But to be honest, if you, if you put a roadway through there, uh, it's kind of a roadway to nowhere unless to Councilman Scrivens' point, unless you're carrying something clear down to the, um, to the fairgrounds complex.
Very good.
Because you have large grass fields there where they play soccer, and you have, actually, there's a large grass field where they do nothing back there. Yeah, so it would be a pretty good-sized stretch of roadway that they'd have to pave through there. And of course, you'd have a couple of structures that have to be torn down, um, on my neighbor's property. And so, yeah, there, it would be a decent-sized project without, without question.
And the only other street that it would intersect would be Almeida as it goes through.
So. We've previously had discussions with folks from the, um, from the Ag Society with the, with the, with the Fair Board, um, as well as members of the county about ways to come up with an alternative means of ingress egress to the fairground side. Because for, whether it's the fair or hand vengeance or other events, there, there is a limitation, you know, off, most of your traffic has to come off the fairgrounds, uh, roads. So, that is a problem. Uh, however, we've talked about some other alternatives that we think would probably be better for safety and for overall accessibility. Um, again, this is not necessarily one of those favorable steps that we would necessarily endorse, but, uh, we'll follow up on this and see if we can figure out, uh, where these rumors are coming from, if there's some substance to it, and, and then see where we take it from there.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. All right. Next is an administrative motion F. This is the 2021 Insurance Program Renewal, and, uh, Mr. City Manager, we'll let you discuss that, please.
Uh, thank you, and, uh, we do apologize for the lateness that this item has delivered to council this year like prior years. The reason that this item, uh, the Agenda Report gets to you so late is that we are trying to get, uh, the most up-to-date information on our, uh, health insurance program utilization, which really looks at all the way through September and, and, you know, gets as much data as we can because typically, the more data we have, the better rate we can, we can achieve in a renewal. And that is the case this year, that by stretching this and getting more data, uh, we are getting a more favorable rate. Um, this evening, you're presented with an agenda item that, uh, really has, uh, if approved, has implications for our health insurance renewal and the particulars for that program, as well as our other insurance coverage, which includes, uh, life and dental and vision. Um, and, uh, as always, this continues to be a major point of concern and emphasis for our, not just our staff leadership, but for the Insurance Committee, which is, uh, populated by representatives from all of our employee groups, um, because it's such an important benefit, and frankly, because it's a costly benefit. Uh, anybody who, uh, uses healthcare, anybody who has insurance knows that the cost of healthcare continue to rise at probably an unsustainable rate. Um, so getting the best possible value in, uh, for the city while at, while sustaining, uh, a good coverage for our employees is, is a definite challenge. Um, the Insurance Committee has, uh, monitored claims all through the year. We have regular updates with our, uh, with our broker, our consultant, and, um, and so we've, uh, kept a, uh, sort of real-time assessment of, of how claims have gone. We've had a pretty good year, all things considered, in terms of the claims, and, um, so that's positioned as well for a renewal. Um, if you remember, uh, we moved this, uh, for this year to incorporate a new program component, a component called the True Cost, uh, which is a little bit different approach, and so we offered that True Cost Plan in addition to a high deductible, uh, healthcare, uh, option as well with an HSA component. And so, uh, we feel like offering these alternatives overall has worked for our staff, and the True Cost has definitely helped to keep the overall cost, uh, for the city down, as well as for the employees, uh, who participated in that option. Um, so, uh, the Insurance Committee is recommending continuing health benefits for, uh, program year 2021 as follows. Offer the dual option plan that I just spoke of, uh, with the high deductible HSA as well as the True Cost. Uh, partner with our, uh, partner, uh, custom design benefits as a third-party administrator for claims processing, and some life financial as the stop-loss carrier. This would be a switch to a new stop-loss carrier. We have a little bit better, uh, uh not only a little bit better value for next year, uh but some of what they included in their proposal would help lock in some of our costs for the following year if we continue with them as a carrier, uh for the, the uh stop-loss. Uh continue to provide the city contribution of fifteen hundred dollars uh for a single, three to five hundred for a family for the uh folks enrolled in the HSA plan. Uh continue to provide the opt-out option, um as described here, and I won't put through all of those. Um offer a health reimbursement arrangement for employees enrolled in the True Cost Plan, um of two thousand for single and four thousand for family. And then offer a health reimbursement arrangement for employees who opt out to cover claims in excess of two thousand for single and four thousand for family, again, with the other details. Um you can see what the monthly insurance premium uh breakdown is um for twenty twenty-one with the HSA versus the True Cost. Um further, um looking at the vision dental and life insurance. Uh the vision plan through National Vision Administrators is in the second year of a two-year rate guarantee of zero percent, so no action there. Superior Dental renewer, renewals at two-year rate guarantee with a four percent premium reduction for uh twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two, so that's positive. And UHC Group Life Insurance Renewals, a three-year rate guarantee with a six-point-six-seven percent premium reduction uh for those three years, and um and we're, we're happy to offer those um at a very competitive price. Teladoc is also a component, uh we've had good utilization with the Teladoc and this, again, helps to keep costs uh a lot lower for us because it provides an option for employees and their families to utilize this digital service rather than actual in, in-office visits, so it's a convenience to the employee, it's a cost savings to the employee. And because it helps to avoid an office visit, it ends up being a cost for the city, or excuse me, a cost savings for the city as well as employees uh by reducing um uh for a Teladoc visit versus an in-office visit. And so we've laid out what those costs, uh there are some minor increases that are attached with that, but we uh are looking to include that for uh plan year twenty twenty-one as well. Now finally, uh enrollment management services, who uh helps to coordinate all of the uh employee services that we offer to line employees up and manage these functions. Uh we are uh recommending that we continue to partner with them as well. So this is a seven-part recommendation that we are presenting to council, uh again, um the lateness of, of this coming to you so that we're getting the most up-to-date information to get the best possible value. I think that probably the biggest end, end-all be-all takeaway um for the renewal of, 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 in terms of premium um for, for the insurance offering, it's about an eight-point-two percent increase over last year. Not great, but when you consider what medical trend is and the ten to fifteen percent. Um and you look at the increases we've had the last couple of years, which have been fifteen, twenty or more percent, um this per represents a pretty good value, so um we can entertain any questions, uh we have Jackie Potter, HR Director, uh here, and she's probably the most knowledgeable. Uh Jared, our assistant city manager, sits on that insurance committee as well, so he can probably answer questions, so we'll entertain any questions.
Okay, so anybody have a question? I got one. All right, so I'm doing the math here, I'm just making sure I understand this right, okay, let's say I have a family plan and I'm enrolled in the twenty twenty-one HSA program. So that monthly premium of twenty-four fifty-nine, that's what costs the city? Is that our cost?
That's the total cost.
Total cost per month?
Per month.
For that family?
Yeah.
So they pay depending?
For family coverage.
Family coverage.
Now bearing in mind that depending on when you were hired with ci- with the city, your premium split with the city will be a little different.
Could be ten, twenty or thirty, right?
It would be fifteen, twenty or thirty.
Fifteen, twenty or thirty, okay.
We have, I think, about a third of our employees that are on thirty percent now. Give or take, um so uh they're, they're, for a family coverage, your monthly premium cost will be uh you know, for, for many of our employees, a third of that, and then for another group, it'd be twenty percent of that, and then we have a smaller group that's at fifteen percent.
Got it, okay, okay, so yeah, that's a pretty sizable amount of money.
Yeah. Yeah, without question.
How does that compare to um the private sector? Do we?
It varies a lot, I mean, and you know, for us, and I know oftentimes we'll have folks complain about this benefit, saying, I'm in the private sector and I don't have that benefit. And we recognize that that is one comparison, we also have to do a comparison with other governmental entities. Uh private sector is really all over the map, um and eh, and, and again, they have more flexibility in the types of unique benefits that they can offer than we do. Well, and it's a little hard for us to offer a comparison, what we can say is comparing our program to other public sector programs, so other city and county programs in our region and our state, if you look statewide, I think the average employee share of insurance is about fifteen percent, based on the most recent serve.
It's actually, it's more like eleven, it's pretty low.
So yeah, so I think Miami Valley was maybe fifteen and statewide, it was about eleven percent. So new employees being hired at the city right now are paying double what on average or more um of what public employees are paying in other cities and, and counties across the state. Sorry? Yeah, I mean, I, I'm not sure, I can tell you, we can tell you right now, nobody else in Miami Valley has employees starting in thirty percent uh share.
Thank you.
How much, just curious, how much is that, um hundred per, hundred people are participating in the opt-out program? How, how much have you seen that change over the years? Was there less last year, more this year kind of thing?
It's, it's ebbed and flowed a little bit, but it's been pretty consistent overall, yeah, yeah. And again, the value of that program, and again, we've had folks who complained about that program in the past and questioned it. Um uh you know, if you're paying someone not to be on your program because they have an alternative option through their spouse uh or some other program, um it's an outlay of cash, but you have to, on balance, realize that if they, if they stay with the city, you have not only a similar cost because you can see what this is gonna cost the city over the twelve months at, at that breakdown. Uh but then it also counts against our claims history. And that, you know, so it has a, a double negative effect for us, and so having those folks off of our role uh really, really benefits to us twofold over the long haul.
Now that, that uh bullet for, on the front, that stayed steady then, those um continued provided opt-out option, those, those values have not increased or anything like that?
Those are all variable for much.
Any other questions? Okay, so uh as a point of order, we are voting on all seven recommendations, can we do this collectively?
Yeah, I think in the past, we've done it collectively, Madam Law Director, would you concur? We could, they can do this under one motion?
Well, I think it's being presented as one plan, correct? You're presenting it as a health insurance program plan?
Correct, correct.
Then I think it could be done as one.
Okay, does anyone have an issue with that? No, okay, so I'll request a motion to um approve the recommendation by the city for these seven items. Six items, and uh I'll accept a motion at this time.
So moved.
Moved by the mayor, and a second. Seconded by Councilwoman Dean. Any other discussion regarding the health insurance plan? And s- staff, thank you for putting this together, yeah.
And also, if I can, Mr. President, uh just want to thank the, the staff members who participate in that insurance committee, it really is a collaborative effort and um I think everyone's working together to try to get the best value both, for both employees and, you know, and our taxpayers, and so we appreciate the collaboration with that.
All right, thank you very much, I attest, employees are expensive. Yeah, if you're upset you make twenty dollars an hour, you probably make more like twenty-five dollars an hour because of the cost of insuring people and the benefits and vacations and holidays and.
Probably forty percent.
Absolutely, yep, all right, um we'll go ahead and get a roll call on this, please.
Vice President Wallace? Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Branham?
Aye.
Councilman Dean?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
President Smith?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you very much, our next item is administrative motion approving the schedule of bills in the, in the amount of six hundred ninety-one thousand.
We did now.
We'll make a note, seven hundred eighty-two dollars and seven cents. Uh Mr. Finance Director, do you have anything to add to the schedule of bills?
I, I don't, I would just note that, again, the majority of the expense here, the largest portion is related to the meter project, so we are growing uh much closer, getting much closer to, to the end of those expenditures, but it is an expensive project, so.
All right, thank you very much. Motion to pay the bills tonight. You have a question? Okay, um we'll go with that question, go ahead.
Just one on page four. Uh account twenty-ten, I mean twenty-twenty dash ten dash oh-two. And I note that date, and then I know the next entry in that date. Is there a gap of entries, or is that just how the, how you assign the, the fund?
In terms of the dates?
No, in terms of the number.
The cost?
The number, you know what I mean, that we're doing the service for.
Is, oh.
See what I'm?
Yeah, I think that's the date the service was actually rendered.
Uh-huh, now are there any other services in between those two dates? That's the question is.
Probably not, we have definitely seen an uptick in this service this year.
Right, okay, just asking that question.
Yeah.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you, did you get your question answered? Okay, um okay, still looking for a motion to pay the bills tonight, moved by the mayor, and I'll second that, any other discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Vice President Wallace? Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Branham?
Aye.
Councilman Dean?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
President Smith?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you very much, next we, our next item is reports and committees. The only re- report tonight is from BRACA, our Board of Recreation, Arts and Cultural Activities. That met on um actually October nineteenth, uh at seven o'clock, we had four of our five voting members present. And the topic of discussion was hometown Christmas. And uh it was discussed that we would try to have um activities that limited crowds um and made things more sporadic through our downtown area while still supporting our downtown merchants during this COVID issue, um more will be announced on this after our next BRACA meeting, which is in a week. And uh we'll have precise times and listed activities on the hometown Christmas, we're working to secure uh horse and buggy. Um getting a commitment with uh Xenia Ensemble for carolers um as well as establishing a time that will be safe um either during the lunch hour or the evening hour, it'll be one or the other. Um but those decisions have not been confirmed yet, um but there will be lights at Shawnee Park for our citizens to view, so some things won't change, but some things will be uh limited participation. Um and we are working to have um a Santa house with interactive Santa. Um how that's gonna be done, we'll be following uh protocol, COVID protocol, and um there will be some items given away to children, but at this time, there are no plans for a parade. All right, so moving on is our appointed officials, reports and council comments, and we'll go to Mr. City Manager first.
Thank you, sir, I did want to piggyback a little bit off of that, um we are, of course, as you indicated, still planning on moving forward for the hometown Christmas, we are also still planning on moving forward with trick-or-treating. Uh we have been in consultation with uh the uh Health Commissioner as we look at these types of community activities in addition to, you know, broader concerns with COVID nineteen, so uh we're continuing with those, there are guidelines out there that we will follow, uh to make sure that we can provide those programs safely, but it's very important to us uh that we allow kids and families to exist, you know, still be able to celebrate some of these events. Uh related to the COVID situation, I think most of our community is aware that Green County, uh the designation under the state color coding, uh we were elevated to a red status last week, that has been sustained this week, our numbers are a little higher this week than they were last week. Um I think from our perspective, we're not so concerned with the number of cases, it's the hospitalization rate that is driving uh the majority of the concern locally as we talk with our Health Commissioner. Um I will also share that um for, for council's identification, uh I think we do have some pers- uh concern from a staffing perspective, I said to you in the meal earlier today, laid out some of these concerns and some of the things that we are doing to try to uh address this, the key problem that we really have is not so much positive COVID cases, it's what the federal government and state would designate an exposure, which requires us to then quarantine staff, particularly staff like public safety who come in contact with the residents uh very personally, and so um under some of those quarantine definitions, it's becoming increasingly difficult uh to keep our staffing levels where we need them to be to provide services, so we are having to uh take an aggressive approach to look at alternative uh means of, of identifying quarantining and perhaps bringing people back a little early. Um I just don't want us to be in a situation where uh we have to quarantine an entire platoon in the fire division, suddenly we are having trouble providing core services. Um so we met with our, our labor uh representatives today and supervisors, department heads, uh talked through the scenario, I am issuing a new uh administrative directive today that will lay out some guidance on uh s- an alternative approach we can take to bringing uh to returning employees back to work who've had an exposure, so we think this is doable, but I will, I will mention that probably the fire division is the most, of most concern right now because of the overall staffing situation we have, we have multiple positions that are vacant. We have a couple of ex- uh staff on extended leave due to, due to injuries. Um when you add in several of these COVID, whether they're positive tests or uh quarantines due to an exposure, it, it is creating a concern for us, so we're monitoring this very closely. That's all I have this evening.
All right, thank you very much, all right, Mr. Finance Director.
Thank you, Council President, uh I'm pleased to announce that uh last week, the uh a rep from the Auditor of State's office uh came in and he presented uh us with the Auditor of State Award uh with distinction for our two thousand and nineteen financial report, so uh we'll, we'll put it in a nice frame, they don't put it in the nice plaque like they did last year, but uh so, but, but um, but a, a very good thing, um Mr. Brayden, if you recall, last year, uh came to the council meeting and presented the Auditor of State's avoiding those presentations this year because of everything going on uh with the pandemic. Uh but uh it is a, a very good thing for the city, basically uh means that we filed our report on time, there were no uh findings for recovery, material weaknesses, uh citations, significant deficiencies, uh some other things like no ethics referrals, bank reconciliation issues, public meeting or public records issues. So it really gets uh at um uh good governance more broadly, it's not, it's not a, an award that's specific to finance, obviously, it's um uh the financial report plays a, a significant role, but they look at a lot of other things organization-wide to make sure that we're complying. And uh they didn't find anything that was, was troublesome, and so uh pleased that we were uh given that award. Um in addition to that, uh the Ohio State of Representatives, the House of Representatives, uh they uh in response to us receiving that award, uh recognized that it was sponsored uh by Mr. Rick Peralos. Um and they c- uh commended us on uh, on obtaining that award as well, so nice gesture from, from them as well, so wanted to make counsel aware that's, uh those are good things that we can um hopefully uh speak to the, the diligence of our staff and, and that we're doing things in a way that uh is prudent and, and good stewardship is uh, is prevalent here in, in the city, so that's all I have this evening.
All right, thank you, Mr. Finance Director, I'm gonna back up for just a second, I'm sorry, I missed a uh question the mayor had for the City Manager.
Thank you. Um I was contacted this week about, um well, one of our local business owners contacted me about some homeless folks hanging around on Main Street, becoming a challenge, and I, I know that she's concerned about it, I know this is an ongoing issue, I know there's not really there's nothing illegal about being homeless, and we certainly, we can't just cart people away, that's wrong, I just I wanted to at least bring it up and say, are we making any forward progress as far as this goes, I told her, you know, that this, we know this is an issue, and I, there's no clear answer, but I at least wanted to bring it up tonight.
Yeah, so I, I'm glad you did, actually, um the um earlier this year, of course, this has been an ongoing issue, and homelessness in our community is not new, uh in our county, it's not a new issue. I think it's been exacerbated a little bit uh with COVID and some of the issues we've, we've experienced over the course of this year. Uh but we recognize this concern with our business owners and residents, I recently responded to some residents who, who reported an encampment, and we are reactively addressing those issues as they come up, however, the broader issue of homelessness remains very enigmatic, it's a complex problem. But we know that this is a community concern that's not going away, so I uh asked our development staff to begin to do some outreach with um their cohort or other leaders in communities around Green County um to look at how we might start a multi-jurisdictional conversation, because I think that there's broad consensus that this is not a city issue, it's really more of a county issue, because homelessness folks in our community tend to be transient from community to community within the county, oftentimes using our trail, our bike trail system. Uh so in doing this, uh we've reached out, we have verbal commitments from Beaver Creek, Fairborn, Bell Brook. Um I think it was Silver Creek, um we've reached out to Jamestown, haven't gotten a, a response. Xenia Township declined to participate, but the other, all the other jurisdictions have indicated they would send staff and probably council representatives as part of a indicated they would send staff and probably council representatives as part of a task force to come together and have a county-wide discussion about how we address this issue. So I'm really pleased that we can take the leadership in bringing folks together from around the county to address this issue. So I think we'll probably be coming back to council with a request for a volunteer to represent the council, and again, bringing both elective as well as administrative leadership to the table to talk about how we deal with this as a county. And again, probably, probably in November, we'll come back with that request. So there is a conversation that's occurring.
Okay.
The county development department is also included in that conversation, so that's where we're at.
Is there a goal date of when to serve us? Did you say, I'm sorry?
No, recognizing we're working around the COVID issues and figuring out how you meet, and then also understanding what the mission of this group would be and sort of agreeing on that collectively. But I think certainly by the, by the end of this year, we'd like to have that, that conversation started, at least digitally.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Sure.
Do we have a target date when Bridges of Hope reopens? Are they open now?
It's open.
They are open now?
Yeah, they've been open.
Very good. All right, thank you. Madam Law Director, what would you like to add tonight?
Just one thing, a point of order, if you would, Mr. President. I ditched a text with the Finance Director. I know Dr. Wallace has been having some problems with his connections tonight. There were just last minute. If we could just get his votes, we can call him on the phone. If we can get his votes recorded before you adjourn the meeting, then we can count them. If it's done after adjournment, we won't be able to count them. So if we can just reach out to him before you formally adjourn, we'll be able to count his votes if he's having some technical difficulty.
And I think what we'll do, Madam Law Director, we have his number here, so we will, before we adjourn, if it's okay, Mr. President, we'll call, put it on speaker so we can catch it on the audio, and then have the Finance Director run through these that he did not get recorded to make sure we have them.
That would be perfect.
All right, thank you very much. All right, I'm going to go to my council colleagues, and if they have anything to add tonight, and we'll start on the left here with Councilwoman Dean.
I don't have anything tonight.
Nothing for this evening? Okay. Councilman Scrivens?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just three things. First, I want to compliment our professional engineer that we have employed with the city, Mr. Chris Berger. He's been riding heard on a lot of questions and comments regarding the roundabout and how to navigate and et cetera. So just want to say, Mr. Berger, thank you for all your leadership on that in terms of the lighting, the traffic flow, just everything. And then also, I haven't even been out to Colorado yet, but I understand it's been paid from curb to curb and end to end. And, Mr. Berger, you did your job there, sir. And then finally, Mr. President, just want to have condolences to the family of Virginia Stills. She was the former First Lady of the Middle Run Baptist Church here in Xenia, and her husband was a former pastor at the church and happens to be my home church, and she passed away at the wonderful age of 90. So we had her home going here just last week, and we're going to try to move on. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Councilman Scrivens. For those comments.
Oh, sorry. One final thing, I want to compliment the Finance Director and his team and the whole management team for not only getting a proclamation from the State House, but also for the award for a job that's recognized as being well-done. All of the i's were dotted, the t's were crossed, everything added up, there were no discrepancies. So you did a good job managing the public's money. We want to say publicly, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. I'll go to Mike Wright. Councilman Branham?
Basically, just want to say thanks for everybody's hard work, not only, not only in the Finance Department, but in every department that we have here at the city. Everybody's hard work doesn't go unnoticed. Also, my recommendation is for staff, like, I don't know whether department heads ever send out emails when it comes to, you know, personal employees that go above and beyond or do wonderful things, complete tasks, you know, that have gone above and beyond, but if council could be CC'd on that, that would be, that'd be awesome, just so that we can, you know, hey, Joe Schmo gave, went above and beyond this week, and, you know, just so that we can duly note that and just so that we can be aware.
Yeah, we can actually do that. We have a program called Xenia Proud, where employees, supervisors, or members of public can recognize a job well-done, above and beyond by our employees, and so we recognize them regularly, and we can certainly copy counsel when those notices go out.
Awesome, yep. And also, you know, I do appreciate Colorado Drive. I've gotten plenty of messages and emails about Colorado Drive, and everybody's very thankful about having that, you know. And also, of course, definitely noticing uptick in speeding, which I know that you guys are working on a point for that, citywide, because, you know, it's gotten a little out of hand.
All right, thank you very much. Councilman Dean?
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't have anything tonight.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Mays?
Of course, congratulations, Finance Director and your team. That's something that we can all be very proud of, so congratulations to you. Your schedule's been pretty late as far as the mayor duties. There's a couple of ribbon cuttings next week, but we did start back with mayors and managers, and that's exciting. Centerville was able to host us outdoors at Benham's Grove. We heard from Judge Parker. He's a Montgomery County Common Pleas Court judge, and he did a great job. We had the opportunity to sit with, his name just lost me, the new commander of the base. Miller? Colonel Miller?
Yeah.
Had an opportunity to talk with him a little bit and was able to brag on Xenia for a while that he loves this golf course, so he's super excited to come here and invite him out, and he's excited to learn more about Xenia. We will talk about our bike trails. He was very excited about that. So just, those are moments where I'm really proud of this community and the things that we can offer, so it's good night. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you very much. Vice President Wallace, are you able to hear us? Just going to ask for his comments. I don't think he can hear us, so I'm going to go ahead, and before we adjourn, we are going to make a motion to go into executive session, but before we do that, I would like to remind the public that next Tuesday, actually, a week from Tuesday is Election Day. So this is our last council meeting before the election. I would encourage everyone, I don't care whether you're Republican, Democrat, we're all Americans, please do your civic duty and vote. We need to remember that no matter what the outcome of the elections are, we need to pray for peace and unity. Our country has been through enough in 2020, and let's just come together as adults and have some harmony. That's all I'm asking for. So I'm going to make the motion at this time. We will go to an executive session.
Mr. President?
And, yes, and then we will come back, and then we will adjourn. So before we go to executive, Mayor Mays has one more thing to add.
I'm sorry, I apologize, I forgot, but I do want to put this on record. There's been a lot of questions about whether or not there will be a Thanksgiving Day meal, the community meal that has been every year at the senior center. And the plan is to still move forward with that, but in a drive-through fashion. So I just wanted to let people know, I'm getting a lot of questions about that. We will still need some volunteers for that to help. There'll be a whole new traffic issue that we're going to be dealing with, and boxing up all the food to go, still doing some delivery very carefully, but that is still on and that is still a go. That's all.
Thank you very much.
Should we be certifying his votes real quick?
Yes.
Dr. Wallace?
Yes.
Could you please confirm your vote for the minutes from 10/8/2020?
Yes.
And for the five-year capital plan?
Yes.
For the acceptance of the victim advocacy grant?
Absolutely. In fact, I tried to make the motion, but that didn't get heard.
Yeah, I got you as a second there, so.
Okay, awesome.
The motion to appoint Councilwoman Dean for the CIC?
I'll sort of approve of that one, yes, aye.
Motion to award a contract to Insituform for sliplining?
Yes, they, this highest and this be, uh, lowest and this be.
Motion to change the meeting dates for holidays?
I was not clear on that, but yes, obviously, we can't meet on Thursday, it's Thanksgiving, yeah.
The Heritage Pre nomination?
Yes, yes.
And the insurance renewal program?
Okay, let me do something that, no. Okay, now, one more time, one last thing to say.
The insurance renewal program?
Absolutely.
The Schedule of Bills?